That's why I gave everybody till last second to get here, so they could get the audio going. That backfired.
We're gonna recess. And for notes, Mary, I called it at six thirty eight, recess. I put us in recess for five minutes at six thirty eight.
Okay.
Yeah, I wrote it down for you too. We're good?
Yeah, there was just one button.
One button.
We're good.
He just can't quit. Hi, Jase.
He's gonna miss us all.
I know.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and pull us back from our recess now that our audio is working and we will... Is there any other discussion that anyone wanted to have about vice chair? Okay, so then, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. I'm sorry, I'm having a vice chair.
My motion wants to have a vice chair.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Everyone will be voting to have a vice chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. So we are gonna be voting on having a vice chair. Just a friendly reminder, maybe you all remember, but maybe Chelsea, you don't know this, don't play tidbit. When I go ahead and start, or at least as I do it for board chair, I will have to ask three times for nominations. So after I receive a nomination, I still have to ask three more times with the awkward fun pauses for any other nominations. So with that, I will look for nominations for board chair.
I nominated Tricia Mealing.
I will look for nominations for board chair.
I nominate Jen Smith.
I will look for nominations for board chair. I will look for nominations for board chair. I'm looking for nominations for board chair. Okay, so we have two nominations, one for Tricia Mealing and one for Jen Smith. I will open it up for discussion.
I nominated Tricia Mealing. I think you've done a great job in the past year. You've got the experience in the position. See no reason to change it up?
I nominated Jen. As far as communication goes, she's often one to prompt conversation amongst the board, whether it just be in terms of scheduling, getting things on the calendar, planning ahead, or even more in depth, just looking forward, planning ahead when it comes to decision making. What are our financial implications coming up in the future? She's kind of driving that conversation a lot. And even not at the board table, she will prompt necessary conversation through either the superintendent or the board chair that then gets communicated out to the full board. She's been very consistent with that. So that's probably the biggest reason I think that that needs to be a priority for board chair, to be making sure that the full board is informed on the same page and staying ahead of things. So that would be... I also think that you have a tendency to evaluate our processes. Are they the most efficient? Are they the most effective? Are they going to make our decision making process produce the best results for the district? And sometimes, you know, the norms of the board are correct, and they work well. And sometimes we need to evaluate whether or not it's the most efficient thing. I think you've been very vocal and good about questioning those things when they need to be. And that's something that is necessary in a chair when it comes to leadership, so.
Any other discussion?
I would vote for Jen also. I just think that this last year was kind of a mess. And I would like to see new leadership because of the mess. I think that Jen has that ability to communicate with the public and try to draw us back together instead of being so divisive. There was a lot of heat that came down on some of us board members that could have been squashed, and they didn't. So I think that with somebody that is able to work with both sides and reason it out, I think Jen would be the best option at this point.
I think a lot of the divisiveness that came during the contract time was due to a lack of communication, which I have voiced.
A lot of lack of communication. The fact that we had to walk through a gauntlet of people that didn't have the information or were given the wrong information, that's never gonna happen again. It can't. The fact that I'm a police officer and I have to be led out of this building by another police officer because of the lack of information or the lies that were given, that is a lack of leadership. So that's why I vote for Jen.
So, I think I'll respond with the question of if there was misinformation being given, where was it coming from?
From you guys.
Okay.
From you guys.
And I'd like to know what specifically you're talking about.
Well, do you want to talk about the special meeting that was devised? Do we want to do that right now?
Wait, you brought it up in a general sense.
Okay, I'll explain it to you. I'll explain it to you.
I don't want it to be heated. I just want it to be matter of fact.
But it's very matter of fact. You called me as the board chair, asking for that special meeting date, right? You recall that meeting or that call?
I mean, after I'd already called the meeting, yes.
Okay, you call a meeting and then you don't even give us the courtesy to actually get the proper or a good date? You called me up and said, hey, what dates are you available? I'm in the middle of a frickin' robbery suspect frickin' call. And you're sitting here on the phone with me, body cam running, recorded conversation. And you're asking me when I'm available. I tell you when I'm not available. I'm gonna be in South Dakota on a trip. And what do you do? What'd you do?
I kept the meeting that I'd already scheduled.
Crap, when nobody else was available. And then you do that little show, getting news channels, getting all the people wound up. And where we have to frickin' be led out of here by police escort. And then have police officers sitting there at our homes on extra patrol because of you guys not squashing that and actually coming up with the truth. Those people weren't gonna lose their jobs. But you spun this community into a frickin' frenzy. And because of that leadership, I don't have any trust in your ability to lead this board. That is my opinion, and because of your lies, I'm telling you, that was a wicked move that you guys pulled. Wicked. And that stuff needs to end.
I think that was, I mean, the sentiment is, and I've communicated this with you since, is I had communicated multiple times leading up to that special meeting and had asked for follow-up because you had called and asked for alternative dates. And I'd given them and then never heard anything. So I had followed up multiple times and even the night before, followed up again, stating that I was not available, would not be there, and I never got a response. And I, you know, because of that, some pretty negative things happened to me and my family. And that can't be the type of leadership that we have. And it all comes back to communication. A lot of that would have been avoided, even from February on, a lot of it would have been avoided with communication, any, you know, any at all. And especially that situation that kind of boiled the pot over, that could have been avoided with communication. And so it's extremely hard to have confidence after that, as I told you before, face to face, that it's, you know, the trust part of it is...
And if there was some kind of...
The degradation of trust.
If there was some kind of miscommunication, I can forgive that, okay? But the problem is, you guys knew that we were not available that day. Instead, you got news channels, you got hundreds of people into a room, and then you played into the media frenzy. And then you guys all posed in the room with the photographers taking photos of you guys. And then you knew exactly where I was, Trish, exactly where I was, on my way back from a vacation with my family. And what did you do? You called me up and said, oh, poor, hey Scott, I hope you can make the meeting. Playing into the frickin' news cameras, like we are the villains here that are not responding to a special meeting that you brought up and didn't give us an opportunity to get the right, the date. And the date I gave you, mysteriously, that's when we actually had that special meeting then, when it worked for all of us. But instead, you chose to go through that dog and pony show and play out into the community, and then you played victim. You played victim at one of those meetings right after that incident and going, oh, I'm the victim of this incident, people slandering me. You slandered us, okay?
I don't agree with you on that. I never went on social media. I did not contact a news league.
But you knew exactly what was going on when news cameras were there, and then you couldn't sit... I still got the recording of you frickin' calling.
Right, I don't disagree that I called you.
You knew where I was. So why did you play into that game? And then you, Matt, you sitting there with your head down like, oh, poor, where is everybody? You knew exactly where we were. We weren't available. But you played into the crowd and got everybody in this community fired up. And I have had to frickin' deal with that for months, that we're the bad guys.
Just like Tricia said, I did not contact any sort of media outlet. That had nothing to do with me. That was a public meeting. Media outlets show up to public meetings, okay? I had no idea a photograph was being taken.
Did you know where we were? Did you know where we were?
I had no idea because I was not informed of that.
Okay, so there's a lack, again, that's lack of communication then.
No, it's not, because it was the board's chair and the superintendent that put together meetings.
Right.
So that's who put together meetings.
Superintendent on a special meeting, that is actually the board chair's, not the superintendent's responsibility.
And...
But yet you went forward, you still went forward with that fake meeting.
We did, because it was the last week before the contracts expired, and we had multiple...
And you knew exactly that we were not available. You knew every one of us were not available. But yet you still played into that game. That's why I have a lack of confidence in going forward with you. That's why I vote, let's move on then.
Normal procedure for studying that meeting was not followed. In the past, we have...
We've never had a special meeting.
Actually, we have.
Up until that point, we have never had a special meeting that was needed to call because of the situation we were in, no. We'd had special meetings for the superintendent here. Those were scheduled months in advance or weeks in advance, at least.
We've had special meetings called. When a superintendent resigned, we had a special meeting to make sure that there would be a forum available. I had emailed you multiple times asking if there was a forum. You never responded. The response came from our former interim superintendent. You, again, knew that I wasn't available. It was made very clear that there would not have been a forum there. And you decided to proceed, whether it was you on your own or you and the interim superintendent at the time. Regardless, you did proceed with the meeting, knowing there was not gonna be a forum. And that should not have happened. And that is what I will say on that.
So I set a meeting. I called our interim superintendent at the time. I set a meeting. I asked him, I went through him. That is the role that we are all in. And I asked him to set a meeting. He set the meeting. Then I get feedback from different board members that they're not available. So I called every single person at this table, sorry, not Chelsea, but Jason. And I tried to find an alternative date that would still allow us, if we did not come to a decision, to have a second meeting if necessary. I found no other alternative to that first proposed meeting that would have given us an option to have to call a second meeting. So yeah, I stuck with that meeting. I was not calling news media outlets. I was not going on social media. And I think that's really, I mean, you're entitled to your opinion, but like, I did not seek that out.
I'm not saying you seeked it out or sought that out, okay? All I know is that it was a big deal. And we already knew that news channels were gonna be there. And you still played into that game. You still posed for the cameras. You, all three, got in that little room and got on your cell phones and called every one of us up, said, oh, where are you? You know dang well where I was. So you played a game into the frickin' public eye. I'm not saying you called them directly. I am saying that you knew dang well what you were doing. It was a strategy that you were playing to fire up the community. And it caused a lot of division in this community because of that, making us the evil ones. Because we could not make that meeting. I gave you the dates that I was available, which was the Friday that we actually ended up doing the meeting. Tuesday, I was gonna be traveling, trying to get my butt home. You knew that. I spoke to you over the phone, and it's actually on my body cam. So, okay, so that is not even an issue. You ended up...
But I didn't meet six people at the meeting, correct?
You had an opportunity to make Friday, which we all six finally made it to that meeting. But you refused to cancel that meeting, and you played into this little dog show. And it was ridiculous.
So I'm gonna take exception to calling that a dog and pony show.
It was a dog and pony show.
Scott, if you look in our policy, the only things a board is allowed to do if there's a lack of a quorum is try to obtain a quorum. So that's what we did.
And you could have frickin' canceled it.
We happened to be in a building that had glass walls. You're right. But we did get out of earshot of everybody else who was there to make our phone calls. So the only thing we could do when three of us showed up is try to get a quorum together, because you're not allowed to do anything else. So it's not a dog and pony show. It's right in our policy that says that's what you do if a quorum doesn't show up to a meeting.
Did you guys know that all three of us were not available on that day? So we didn't even have a quorum. Did you know that?
Like I told you, I wasn't part of the discussion about availability.
I still hope that somebody would come. I still hope that we would have...
Did the board chair advise you what was going on then? So it's a lack of communication then?
That's not a lack of communication.
It is. If she is sitting there going and says, I haven't heard from three of the board members, I don't know if they're gonna show up. Then maybe you started questioning, well, do any, are the schedules matching up where we can actually have this? Or when are they actually available? Instead, you chose to go through with a three-person frickin' meeting that was worthless.
It was a meeting because there was no quorum. Let's be clear.
Yeah, okay. But let's not play word games here. You know dang well what I'm talking about. And this is the BS, and I'm sick and tired of playing this little word game, okay? Let's frickin' get down to business now. Let's figure out what we're gonna do to move forward and try to heal this community. It's been split, absolutely split, because of some of the rhetoric that is being said around here.
I think that it starts with, we have to find a way to move forward as a board. I have voiced my opinion on my lack of trust due to the situation, not specifically only the special meeting. That was the culmination of a lack of communication on the topic leading up to that point since February. So it was kind of months of buildup, that just being the largest and most detrimental part of the whole scenario that occurred. But we have to start with being able to move forward as a board. I don't feel comfortable or confident in moving forward as a board, continuing with you as chair, which I have voiced that opinion. So I guess, yes, Scott, to your point, the community does need to heal and move forward. But it does start with us, and the public's perception of us defines a lot of what happens. And so I think that we need, we do need to have something new in place to try to move forward and have a more cohesive board.
And I'm sorry you have to come into the middle of this.
No, I'm just, you know, listening and not knowing and not being a part of it, of what was going on and to know what was said or not said. I think just more so from an outside perspective, having attended the meetings leading up to it. And the community has seen, I think, division, and there's been instances even prior to that. So I think on both sides, so I do agree, and it sounds like we all agree, of finding a way to try to like, bridge that and heal the community a little bit. I, again, from what I saw, did not, and I think what's hard sometimes is that there is groups within the community that do get outspoken, and sometimes that might reflect on specific members of the board, but not necessarily their direct, and, you know, their direct influence or involvement in things. So I at least appreciate hearing the conversation and acknowledging that there is some healing and coming together that needs to be done.
And don't get me wrong, I'm frustrated with what I saw last year. It doesn't mean that we can't work together and get stuff done. I just think, based off what I saw from last year, and I voted for you, okay? I gave you that opportunity. I was willing to jump across the aisle and give you your opportunity. I just don't think that you did it the right way. And I would like to see, that's why I'm saying I would like to cast a vote for Jen at this point, to see if we can move on a different direction. Because last year was not fun. It was not a fun year at all. And I don't wanna go another two years of us bickering and fighting over stuff. I think there needs to be more communication, and when we have those community members that are lashing out at specific members of the board, that's where, as a board... that's where as a board chair, you need to be out there saying, okay, you're getting some wrong info. There was a lot of people with misinformation that continued to fricking send emails and none of it got squashed. It's the same old bullet, you know, hey, okay, we're working together on this and it was such a, it, no, squash those rumors. Squash the rumors of misinformation. Uh, so that's why I think that we need to heal. We need to heal as a board and, and come together and, and start making the right decisions for the community that elected us in this position, so that's my two cents and I'll stop.
Can I, I'm gonna kinda pick your brain on that. Thank you, Chelsea. That, um, kinda what you described is what we've seen more than just for the past two years, let's be frank. It's been for every one of my years on the board and I'm now starting my fifth year, there's been groups in the community that have been divisive, on, you know, multiple sides of multiple issues. There is a lot of misinformation that gets shared, a lot of it happens on social media.
Yep.
Not solely social media, but a lot of it happens there. So I guess I'd like to just pick your brain, maybe now's a good time to at least start brainstorming like. In the instance that certain groups of people think there's misinformation coming out of the district office, maybe there's not, maybe there's just not much communication and people are filling the void, but what, what would be the best ways of approaching that issue and that situation? To like you said, you know, squash rumors or whatever it is because it's very tough knowing, I've been in her chair and in times that were very divisive. It is very difficult not just to figure out how to communicate with the public, what's an effective way to reach the most ears, but also do it in a way where everybody at the board table can feel like their voice was heard because I frankly ran into some issues in my first few months of being board chair where I was told I shouldn't, by other board members, I shouldn't communicate certain things because it won't be the voice of the whole board. So then I'm kinda stuck with, well, I guess I can't put anything out there because I'm gonna alienate some board members or give that sense to them. So now people, whether it be social media or whatever, are filling the void of not much communication where, you know, we're communicating at board meetings, but not everybody watches the recordings, not everybody shows up to our board meetings, so what's, what are better ways of doing that? What, what, in your opinion, you were unhappy with June, what should have been done differently?
Well, I think that clearly, you know, clearly we have, we're, we're split. We have difference of opinion.
On minimal topics, on minimal topics, in the grand scheme of things, you got like a ninety-seven percent agreement rate here, unanimous.
On certain issues, on, 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 on minimal topics, yes. So, so, yeah, yeah. But what I would say that, I, I don't know, may, I'm just trying to respond with a, an option. Instead of going quorum and calling up every time there's a complaint and, you know, just, it would be too exhausting to deal with that, especially with as many emails that we got last year. But maybe run it by somebody from a different opinion and read the letter or your response back because if there's stuff missing from there. Because there was a lot of emails that could have been handled and responded to. If we would have put some better wording in some of those responses, it could have squashed a lot of the heat. It would have, it really would have calmed the community down, but it didn't happen. Instead, the fire kept brewing and brewing and brewing. And I think if there was at least two people that could look at what is being asked and responding appropriately with two different sides of opinion.
I think that could have happened. Again, from February on, just having a one-on-one conversation with myself or with Jen about what is really your perspective here, what is driving this, what are the concerns or what are the questions? Just, I mean, a lot of times it's even just the action of at least reaching out. That does not mean that we will necessarily end that conversation in agreement, but continuing to try to have an understanding of each other's perspective so that when it does come time to respond to an email. The ideal thing would be is, it would have never gotten to that point where, uh, it was at an inflection point and the community was at the point that it was at where we were receiving so many emails, uh, because the opportunities were there beforehand to deal with it without it coming to that. But in the event that it does, those conversations have already been had between you and I or between yourself and Jen and you have a general idea and you can feel comfortable and confident in your responding, you know, in a way that is respectful of Jen's beliefs as well as yours. But those conversations never occurred, um, throughout those months, those one-on-ones that never, never was I asked really, you know. Why? Why, why is this where you're at? Not, not in a one-on-one conversation and not from a general point of just understanding, why is this, why are you so passionate about this or what is really driving this? Because I think that would have been important in being able to come to a compromise or consensus long before that June special meeting. So in my opinion, it goes way before the emails started coming in. That one-on-one communication probably needed to be happening long before that to avoid what occurred then at the end.
And I'll say, I do agree like that this was something that went on for a few months and I think too, like, as a board, lots of meeting opportunities, I think, would help to like, even if you don't have a lot of people in attendance or watching, it's still a good reference point that there, there is misinformation to be able to direct people back to like, here's the board meeting where it was discussed openly with everyone and what, what individuals, why they believe or feel that way they do or that they're voting to be open in those meeting environments as well to make it a bit more difficult for misinformation to spread or for words to be put into people's mouth.
Yes, just listening right now, the biggest thing that I kept replaying is when Matt and I first got on the board, it was not standard practice for the full board to see what the board chair was responding to any given email. I knew as a new board member that the board chair was responding. I also knew that I had the opportunity to always respond to any email that I felt I wanted to respond to as a, as a board member. And so I guess I look at this as like, okay, so yes, we could continue what we've been doing since, I believe it was when Pat took over board chair, he started BCC-ing the entire board. And I will admit that I really liked to be able to see what the board chair was responding with. But maybe the thing that we should be doing is not putting it all on one position, but creating a space where, you know, if it's, whoever it may be is responsible, so if it want, if whoever wants the job could say, well, I want to be responsible for responding, it's funny, making it a two-person position, that then they are in charge of responding to those emails. And I don't know that it has to be board chair, I don't know if it has to be vice chair, I don't know if it has to be clerk, chairman, like, it could be anybody that would be willing to do that, but that would be a better way of being able to, to go with a united voice then, because I will say that was, that was a struggle. And I don't know that I would agree that it was the, the role to squash rumors, it was to answer the questions and then I guess I always felt that, I mean, I know Matt shared a couple of his responses that he shared. Like you, you emailed someone and shared that your response. But, so that I knew what he was saying, but like, I mean, we're all welcome to respond. So if you didn't feel like I had said something, I guess I find it kinda frustrating that I'm now hearing about it in January versus like, hey, Tricia, I really wish you would have said X, Y, and Z. Like, I really appreciated the email that you sent me. I don't remember what the topic was off the top of my head, but you're like, hey, I really want you to touch this point.
Oh, recently, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, I agree that we can all, we all know that we can respond, I guess, especially when it's super controversial. I, I agree with having one person responding to emails because what good does that do to the public perception or the rift in the community? If you respond in one way and then I respond in opposition to what you said, well, now not only are we in disagreement in public at the board table, we get to do it via email too. I don't think that that's beneficial or, or healing in any way, uh, which is why I didn't. I guess I, you know, whether I agree with the response or not, it was, well, I'm not, I don't feel like I need to turn this fire anymore than what's already happening by disagreeing with whatever the response was, whether I did or not. My point is, is that those responses coming from one person would probably be more representative of the full board if there was more communication one-on-one. Not necessarily you to every single person or the chair to every single person on the board, but at least one-on-one with one other person that maybe has an opposing view, long before those emails start coming in. A, hopefully to avoid ever getting into that situation when the emails are there, but if they do start coming in, you've already had a conversation with me, you know where my stance is, you understand or, or at least have my perspective on it, so when you respond, you're cognizant of that, you know, otherwise I just feel like not only do we get to disagree at a board table, we get to just disagree via email too with people and that's not helpful to move forward.
I would also argue that if you didn't want to then fan a fire, so to speak, you could have at least then responded to me and said, hey, I did not like how you did this. Because when Pat did actually start doing that, like, I don't remember, I think it was actually, you know, that I, from a previous board member, and I don't wanna throw anyone under the bus, but like, there was a previous member and I, somebody shared the response with me. And I was really disappointed in that response. And then I felt that, that, that board chair was, was speaking for me as board chair for the full board and yet I had no idea what they were saying and I really full-heartedly didn't, didn't agree with it. And it opened up that opportunity for me to have that conversation with the current chair and say, hey, I really didn't like how you responded, that, that does not reflect how I feel about X, Y, and Z. And I don't think that it should just be the chair's responsibility to engage in that communication either, like, and I, like I said, I really liked your email that you proactively sent me. Sitting in this chair currently, it, there's a lot of things that I didn't know that the board chair does, um, until you're doing it. And so like, I think it's, it shouldn't just be on that one person to initiate that stuff, I think it could be on anybody, like, I mean, you have every right to tell me or whoever the chair is that you disagree or agree at any time with any response. I don't think it should just be that the board chair has to initiate something. I mean, you had, you had just as much opportunity to come and talk to me between February and June as well. I don't think it's fair to say that it was just my job to, to reach out to you.
I think that is the role of the chair though, when the board is in an obvious disagreement, that's part of the duties of a chair, you're kind of the quarterback, you know? So you already knew there was disagreement. You are supposed to be kind of the, the chair is supposed to be the one that's quarterbacking that situation and trying to find some understanding and consensus so that we can come together. So I do look at that as the role of the chair to reach out to somebody who maybe is in disagreement with you and try to understand their perspective to potentially bring us all together, maybe come to the board table with some ideas now based on the other person's perspective and your own on how can we accomplish this and move forward without it, you know, perpetuating and becoming more dramatic. So I, I do look at, at that as the role of the board chair, that's part of the, kinda what you sign up for is you are, you are the leader in terms of communication.
And I would agree to a point, but I also feel that I, when I read the emails that I responded with, I did feel that I was putting in, I mean, I don't squash rumors like Scott would have liked to, and I, I understand that. But I did, from my perspective, I really was trying to respond with a voice that everybody would agree with and if I wasn't, then, I mean, how am I supposed to know that if you don't tell me?
And I don't know, as far as the emails go during that time, I mean, again, it would have been adversarial no matter what, because yeah, you were responding with pretty generic emails and that's fine. That was about the only way to respond on, you know, with the voice of the whole board again. The goal would have been so that we never got to that point where it was so divided that we were receiving that many emails on this topic and I think that could have been avoided with, again, communication in those four months prior to that. And that, that I would definitely say is the role of the board chair. When, when the first meeting happened in February, and I had emailed you prior to that and just said, I don't, we've never discussed this topic ever and all of a sudden it's on the agenda, why? You know, I had a general why question, but when the vote failed in February the first time, I would say that the role of the chair at that point is to reach out to at least one person who was on the opposing vote side and get their perspective and try to come back to the next meeting in which this topic is on the agenda with some ideas on how we can find consensus on that or at a work set at our next work session to prepare for our following meeting. But at least have those conversations prior so that it doesn't start to build into what it became. And then when it comes time to, if, if it is, we're getting a bunch of emails, I don't, I wouldn't say that you responded in any other way than a generic way, probably the only way you could, but I don't think we needed to be to the point where we were getting thirty emails a day. It had gotten to that point due to the lack of communication up to them.
My personal frustration was during that time, I did email you in that week several times. And it wasn't until I said that I had concerns that you had handed over the role of the board chair to the interim superintendent. And then you responded. I had, I had emailed you multiple times. Never once did you respond. And the real big kicker to me was listening to your forum or the, the forum that the candidates had and you telling the community that you will reach out and have conversations with people with opposing viewpoints. And I sit on this board with you. You ignored my emails. And you never once reached out to ask me why I was bringing a concern forward with those contracts, not once. I had conversations with Matt in negotiations, I had conversations with interim superintendent Lee, we had, we had conversations as a board. But you never once asked me why I had concerns.
I guess I felt, I guess I felt like I heard you at the board table, which is where our conversation was supposed to happen.
But anytime I brought a motion forward, it felt like there was zero willingness to work together. And that is not what a board chair should do. If somebody has something, sure, maybe the board failed it to begin with, okay. Why didn't you reach out and ask me why I was bringing that, why I wanted that amendment? Where, where could there have been something, some sort of gift? I was met with resistance time and time again. And then at the end, I was met with zero response and I did reach out to you. I found out about a meeting that I could not attend via WJON after I received a text message from my husband saying, did you know there's a meeting? Nope. And I emailed immediately and said, I am not available that day. And the response came from the interim superintendent, not you, the board chair.
Well, I'm sorry that Tom beat me to the punch, but did I need to respond after he did?
No.
I mean, if he answered the question, why would I need to respond?
Because you're the board chair calling the meeting, the interim superintendent or any superintendent cannot.
Right.
And at that time, I didn't know you called the meeting because the communication came from Tom. Did not come from the board chair.
Because I don't actually have any access to board book.
You have access to an email.
I do.
And that's how it used to be. There used to be a survey that went out, there was practices that this board had followed up until that meeting. And did you know that there wasn't a quorum? Did you know, were you, was it communicated? Because I asked you, do you know if you have a quorum? Did you know if there was gonna be a quorum at that meeting on Monday? Were you told yes or no?
Did I know if there was a quorum on what day?
Was it communicated that Tuesday if you would have a quorum or not? Going into that meeting?
There were.
The answer to that is yes.
There are calendar come, issues, yes.
The answer to that is yes, you were aware that there would not be a quorum.
No, I hoped. I guess I had that more hope for schedules and things to be able to be moved around given the need that was, the contracts that were in front of us.
And were you given alternative dates by other board members?
Yes, and amazingly, on the phone, they changed from when the emails that I received after that. Nine months.
I didn't change. My, my dates changed?
Your times and dates didn't change.
No, they didn't. I said I'd give you availability and I did, I emailed you. The only, the only correction.
You and I discussed times and dates on the phone and then amazingly, three hours later, when I received your email or whatever timeframe it was, they were not the same as what I could be.
Tricia, that is such a lie. It is not a lie. I said I would be open to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I'd be able to give you specific times.
And I only asked for Wednesday and Thursday. The only person I recall ever giving me Friday availability was Scott.
Well, considering my schedule is always Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there's no way I would have told you that I wasn't available on Friday.
Do you know my availability on any given day?
You didn't offer it. I, I gave you my alternative dates.
Right, but I'm just saying, to assume that I would know your availability on any given day is not fair.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you assume or that I was having you assume. I would never have left out of Friday when I know that my availability can be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And you knew there wasn't a quorum. It was publicly stated there wasn't going to be a quorum. And you still proceeded with. And you still proceeded with the meeting knowing there wasn't going to be a quorum.
Do, do we really want to get into the fine details of the reasons?
I would love to know why you decided on a Tuesday.
So I looked at our schedule and I believe Monday had a a city council meeting, thank you. And Tuesday was the first available date, so I asked interim superintendent Lee to call a meeting, because that is the right of the board chair to call a special meeting, so that's what I did. And he, I apologize that you found out about WJON. I got it in my board email from him. I believe that that was prior to the WJON article being published. But that was, that was the first. We were kind of in the, in a weird space with our school board secretary no longer wanting to be in that role. So there was a little bit of that going on as well. But some of the reasons that I was given by board members, one of them being work, well, statutory language from the state of Minnesota requires that work would give time off for a school board meeting. So my hope was that knowing that that was the obligation of any employer, that then we would be able to have a quorum. Another reason was
But you knew I was not even in the state.
Right, but we don't need six people to have a quorum.
So was that the point of it?
No, it wasn't. I had no idea Scott's availability prior to setting that meeting. It was not a, hey, I want to have whatever. I just, it was not trying to have any kind of gotcha moment. That was not my intention, I didn't know anybody's schedule when I, when I set that meeting.
But I've always said that Tuesdays I am never available. That has always been something that I have said time and time again.
Honestly, the only time I've ever, any day, any day that I remember is because we usually try and schedule on Mondays is you saying Mondays. So I apologize that I don't know your schedule inside and out.
I think that it was simply, this is not how we've ever scheduled any special-
And there was, there's some backstory information that I'm not going to throw another person under the bus for, so I guess I'll just let it die with me. There was reasons that I chose not to go that route. And I will share that in a more private, not, yeah, I'm, I'm not willing to do that too.
Okay, can we bring it back to just where, where we're at here for your board chair vote?
Yep, we can just go to a vote too. I believe the process is raising a hand for whom you are voting for. You need to have four votes for any given person. Is that what everyone's ready to do? Okay, so my name was nominated first, so anyone voting for Trisha for chair would raise your hand. Okay, anyone voting for Jen would raise your hand. So we are at a three, three, three votes for Jen, three votes for Trisha. And we don't have a board chair elected. So then
We can do multiple rounds of voting now, we can vote on the rest of the positions and the rest of the agenda and come back to it as well.
So that was one of my questions, can we, I guess I did, I, whatever experienced this, I can pull up my Robert's Rules book. Are we allowed to take more nominations for this or is it just another vote?
You can open nominations again on a motion. I just watched the webinar, that's the only reason why I know this, MSBA's webinar. But if somebody makes a motion to open nominations, again, if somebody wants to nominate somebody, they can make a motion to nominate somebody else that hasn't been nominated. If anybody at the board wants to do that, it just needs a second. Otherwise, you can move on to the other officers and you can return to it after other business has been voted on.
That's the process I'm familiar with, is that this will be our last vote of the day, try to elect a chair again after everything else is done.
So then I would look for nominations for vice chair. And I will nominate Matt. Do I have any other nominations? Do I hear any nominations? Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, Matt, you are our vice chair. And I will now look for nominations for clerk.
I will nominate Emily Larson.
Do I have any other nominations for clerk? Do I have any other nominations for clerk? Do I have any other nominations for clerk? Congratulations, Emily Larson. I will now look for nominations for treasurer.
Well, just past practice, do we, Chelsea? I know it's common to have a new board member in the role of treasurer clerk, so if you're comfortable, I would nominate you for treasurer.
Okay.
If you're totally opposed, you don't have to accept it either, so.
No, I'm, I'm Do I have any other nominations for treasurer? Do I have any other nominations for treasurer? Do I have any other nominations for treasurer? Congratulations, Chelsea. Then we will move on to the designation of dis- depositories for 2024. Presently, US Bank, Minnesota School District Liquid Assets Fund, PMA Financial Network, and the Minnesota Trust. Do I have a motion?
Hold on.
Second. Okay, motion by Jen, second by Emily, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay, motion carries unanimously. So can we even do number three?
Yeah, it doesn't name any specific person in each role.
We're just authorizing that the signature is, can be as
Okay, so then I look for a motion to authorize a signature for some money for payment of board authorized expenditures bearing the signature of the chair, clerk, and treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Jen, any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, motion carries. I look for a motion to authorize use of the current facility, oh my gosh, I can't speak. For payment of board authorized expenditures until a new one is received.
So moved, sorry.
Second. Motion by Matt, second by Chelsea, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, motion carries. So then we need to have a motion to set the number, date, and time of regular board meetings. Presently twelve, held on the third Monday of each month unless a national holiday. So first we have to motion and we can just, when during discussion, we can talk about if there's any changes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jen, second by Emily, any discussion?
The one in November. I would be, I have a conflict with that one. I would be able to either join remotely unless there was another day that worked for everyone. So I guess my, my question would be, in that instance, is that something do we look to, to move or do I plan to join remotely?
We have moved in the past.
Yep, so if we move it back a week, we'd be looking at the week of Thanksgiving. Or if we move up a week, I guess I, I don't know what people's preferences are, because
Is it, well, if we, all you're saying is we move it back into the future?
Yep, I mean, it's the Monday of Thanksgiving, I don't know if that's really a conflict, but.
Is it just that Monday or is it that whole week future?
Um, it is that through the twenty and through that, so most of that week, yeah.
So the twenty fourth or the tenth?
Yep.
If we, if we don't have to, but if anybody's got a conflict there.
I don't know of any conflicts, that's pretty far out.
Does anyone have a personal preference?
Well, if we move it up, then we are looking to potentially either have a work session if we keep them the same as they have been. Being like a couple days beforehand. So either we get rid of the work session or I would say we move it back.
For the twenty fourth.
The twenty fourth.
My, my personal preference would be to move it back, just given that that's what we've typically done with other holidays. I feel like that's been more of our standard practice. And I like the distance between a work session as well. So is everybody okay with the twenty fourth?
Sure.
Um, it is my understanding that we are still going to have to contact Saint Stephen City Hall or City to confirm. So we are right now tentatively planning for April and October to be at Saint Stephen. But we will be able to confirm that, which is what our normal practice is after we've now established the dates.
Yeah, that's what I've done last year, because I came in as acting chair and I, I didn't get that set in stone before our org meeting last January. So it's, it's the same as what we did last year. So just November is the only change?
Yep.
And then summer meetings at six PM? I know we've had different, depending on the year, we've had different start times for the three summer meetings or is six PM the one we want?
I think for Scott's schedule and really for mine, it is unofficial, I can make five thirty work, but it's not ideal.
Yeah, either one's final, please.
Yeah, five thirty is just really pushing it, and if I give
Stuck on a call.
A big meet or call, I'm kind of screwed.
And then at our work session, we had discussed potentially setting or looking ahead to the following year. And if we don't want to do that, I would at least suggest that we can at least set the meeting. This will be our current board makeup regardless of position, chair, vice chair, whatnot. Do we want to at least look at January twenty twenty six and set that date? I know that that's been helpful for others in the past for planning.
Well, that's fine, I guess my general question is if a holiday falls on a Monday that we are supposed to be having a meeting from here until whenever, can we just safely assume that it's going to be the following Monday? And that would just be standard.
Unless somebody has a conflict.
I'm worried about that Monday, but I think it would be really simple then, because you could, I mean, that could just be any year.
We assume that we're always going to push back Monday, yeah.
Right, and it would just be the week following the holiday.
So next year would be the twenty sixth of January if we push back from Monday.
I'm comfortable with that and that would be fine for the next two years, that's for sure. That's what we know the current, I mean, we'll know the board makeup for the next two years.
I think it'd just be simpler, yeah.
Cause February would also get pushed back in twenty twenty six again.
Yeah, just to be clear, you were, you were wanting to get next January's regular meeting on the schedule, not just the org meeting? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, I think even just saying that, like in our standard practice for what Jen just said, like if we just all know and agree that if there's a holiday, which there typically is in January and February, we're, we're going to be in the practice of pushing it back a week instead of anything else, if, if at all possible.
That's fine.
I mean, is everyone okay setting January twenty sixth?
I don't know that, I mean, we can put that assumption out there, but I don't know that we're obligated to.
Right, no, we're not.
Official until our org.
Because that's after, you're right, that's after next org meetings.
And the org meeting date is the only thing that's officially on our calendar at this point, so it'd be, it's more just for people's planning.
Okay.
They can at least have the January date down there ahead of time.
Yeah, January twenty sixth.
It's going to change, so like it needs to. And I would hope that if anyone has any conflict, we would probably talk about that more in December. The better, the earlier the better for our calendars. It gets hard to be close.
Uh, just to clarify, the one in December says six PM, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, because we have our truth and taxation first.
Perfect.
Yep. Was there any other discussion for our monthly meetings? Okay, so the only changes we made were November twenty fourth and then we have tentatively set January twenty sixth with the intention of pushing back one week on, in the instance of holidays. As a just general rule for our board, so any, that would be what we are voting on. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and we have set our calendar. The little half, well, not even half sheet, quarter sheet, I handed out everyone, I went back and watched the, I look for a motion. So, motion by Emily, second by Chelsea. I had given everybody just kind of what we had agreed upon last year, so if you're okay, I'll just read it quickly so that everyone that's watching or listening can also hear. So salary board members, chair and treasurer at thirty four hundred annually, vice chair clerk and directors at three thousand annually. Annual pay includes one regular meeting monthly, one work session monthly, any social engagements, i.e. graduation or self breakfast. Serving of the board also includes a family activity pass. Our stipend payments for special meetings, committee meetings, listening sessions, or MSBA training rates are as follows. One to six hours is fifty dollars an hour, six plus hours is a four hundred dollar flat fee. We are allowed to put in for mileage reimbursement, but will not be paid for travel time on top of that. That is what we had discussed last year, we can still change that. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm not aware of any issues, I came up with the current system, so I'm happy to keep it the same, unless anybody else knows of anything that had issues.
Okay, so then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I look for a motion to adopt the following resolution allowing the pavement of claims prior to board approval in certain circumstances presently in effect. Joe Prom, Director of Business Services, shall be authorized to make payment prior to board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting without loss of the district, loss to the district of discount privileges. And Joe Prom is authorized to initiate and transact electronic fund transfers for the purpose of investment of excess monies for the payment of bond principal and interest. Said authority is delegated pursuant to Minnesota Statute one nine nine six, section one two three B, point zero two, subdivision one eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Matt, second by Jen, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I will look for a motion to adopt the following resolution determining the status of school board members for the purposes of Minnesota Government Data Practices Act.
Do you want to just synopsis this one, why don't you just give the
Let's know it's version.
So moved, we'll get a second and then you can do that maybe.
Second. Okay, so a motion by Matt, second by Chelsea, I'd actually love if Dr. Revard would you give us a synopsis?
So absolutely, under the Minnesota Government Data Privacy Act, there is an expectation that the board would make a decision on whether school board members are considered employees or whether they're considered elected officials in pursuant to the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act and what that act encompasses of the umbrella that goes over it. Barring the board making a decision on that, you would be treated as elected officials and not as employees. So you would have to make an affirmative vote that you would like to be treated as employees for what the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act provides protections for. Currently, what you'll see is most school boards determine that it's in the public interest for transparency without waste any competing privacy interests that individual school board members may have in regards to most data. You'll note that in about the third paragraph down. I put that out there for a synopsis, so I would be glad to answer any of the questions.
Okay, so if we vote yes to this, we are not
Employees.
Employees.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Which is, like Mike said, the assumption under the law.
Correct.
Okay, so everybody good? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So then I will, I will look for a motion to adopt resolution establishing and assigning the following school board committees. Communication.
Sorry.
I think I may have to say them. And if you guys are okay, I'm going to go with the proposed. So we have, would have a committee of communication and technology, a finance and personnel, board policy, and then a facilities committee. So, second. So first, motion by Jen, second by Emily, any discussion?
Well, my only discussion was, and it's down below, I thought personnel was going to get paired up with negotiations. Instead of stainless finance.
So I agree, I also had that and then my
These are the notes that I was
Dr. Revard said that when we left that work session, because we were not moving operations, we, I think we all, and we can still change it. We had all agreed that we would just leave finance and personnel alone.
And discontinue operations.
And discontinue.
That was my recollection on the notes that I, I saw. However, it's a board practice.
So I, we can do it whichever way we want, Mike? So I, we can do it whichever way we want, Mike.
Finance and personnel is what it is currently, or this past year? Yeah, okay. So the only one that's changing on here is-
Facilities.
Facilities would just drop operations.
Correct.
Well, and I think the idea was that operations are kind of everywhere intertwined. Correct?
Correct.
What is the conversation then?
Moving further down, negotiations, proposed negotiations and personnel, so does that mean personnel is falling off of?
It's whichever way we decide.
It would be in one spot, obviously not.
Yep, it won't be in both.
Exactly. Um, so how do we want to approach that?
I don't have strong feelings, because-
I don't either.
Personnel does have a lot of impact on finance and has a lot of interplay with negotiations, so it makes logical sense for it to be in either place, so.
So do we want to leave it, personnel also does some, okay. Do we want to leave it as finance and personnel and just leave negotiations as standalone? Even though negotiations will fall somewhat under the finance and personnel category sometimes, but.
Well, I think the important thing, at least from my perspective, is regardless of what we decide, if negotiation stands alone, I think somebody from finance and personnel needs to sit on top of those committees, would be my personal benefit.
From a district administration recommendation, we would appreciate a finance and personnel committee. But we do recognize, as Tricia was alluding to, that personnel is directly related to what happens in negotiations, but there are subjects that happen throughout the school year that we'd want to be able to meet on and make sure the board does update it, related personnel that have nothing to do with negotiations necessarily.
Why don't we keep the finance and personnel then? If that's a district recommendation, that's fine.
So is there any other discussion? So we would be voting to approve a communication and technology committee, a finance and personnel committee, a board policy committee, and then a facilities committee.
With the understanding that they're all three-member committees, right?
That would be the, yep, that would be the, yes.
Okay.
So we will vote, you just set our members.
Um, well, so I look back, what we did last year is we actually have to vote on setting them. We don't have to vote on-
Who makes them up. Correct, that's right.
So if everyone is in agreement with that being what we would like to do, then I would, I would say we could take the vote, everybody.
Yeah, the way that the question reads was just adopt resolution establishing, establishing and assigning the following school board committees, so if we are, if our motion and approval is just for establishing these committees, then technically we're not voting on assigning them right now. So it is not totally in line with the motion.
So we have to amend that motion to only assign, or only establish?
Yes, so I make a motion to amend the initial motion to now just be adopt the resolution establishing the committees, not assigning them yet.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Emily and a second by Jen to adopt a resolution to establish the school board committees. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we would be voting to establish the committees that we have discussed. Does anyone need me to repeat those? Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, so we then can start working on, um, communication, finance, board, policy, and facilities. So does anybody have any strong feelings about any certain ones?
Well, finance and personnel has the treasurer usually assigned to that one, so Chelsea would for sure be on finance and personnel. Or at least that's been past practice. I think that's a good choice.
I think if we are saying that at least one person from finance and personnel should also be on negotiations, then I, I mean, honestly, I would keep both Matt and Jen on this committee because we do have, we have, uh-
Well, Mark Ingram should have negotiated on this this year.
Yes, and we will have the teaching staff, I believe, that's coming here, correct?
That's right.
I would say people that have had experience with negotiations, um, this year, I would definitely vote for them to be, remain on that, to go into those negotiations next year.
I'm, I'm happy to stay on that committee.
I am too. I think Matt and I did well together.
Can I ask a much broader question? I just did a tally of, and this is last year's assignments, but of how many assignments each board member had to these four committees? Scott, your name's on there once, are you interested in more?
Well, I was on communications before, but then-
No, you had career taken.
Yeah, right, and I'm not counting the other ones toward the bottom of the page. I'm just looking at the four main committees. Because I see Jason, who's not here anymore, was only on one as well, and then Jen and Tricia were on three. Where the rest of us were on two, so I don't know if we want to try to even out the workload a little more, um, or if people are happy with that distribution. It's just the thing that jumped out to me right now.
I think if people want to take on more, fine, I mean, I don't know that we want to encourage people to be on committees if they don't truly have the desire to do so, though.
Yeah, and if it's not my area of expertise, I can do the operations and facilities because I know how to do that stuff.
Well, and these are just our standings, so that isn't taking into account more committees that we'll be getting to next, so.
So Scott, you're saying that you would like to stay on operations?
That would be also-
Or facilities?
Yes, only facilities.
Yes. I'm fine with that.
Emily, I guess, I guess I was thinking, and we don't have to agree to this, um, I think everyone should have one before anyone gets a second, so Emily and I would be the people that still need to have at least one committee assignment. Is there one that you really passionately want to?
Yeah, I'm gonna be very passionate about policy.
Okay.
But the committee assignment that Matt and I, or that was suggested that we stay on is not one of the four that we were talking about.
No, we were suggested to be on finance and personnel.
Oh.
Yeah, that one and-
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's what, right, that's what you said, Emily?
Yeah, yeah, just because they're, they're-
That we would stay on negotiations also, because finance and personnel-
I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
Is related to negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we're not down to that part yet, but just because they go hand in hand.
That's fine.
And then Emily, yours? Emily's on board policy.
Right now, Jason was on facilities. Scott's, sounds like you're interested in remaining on that, but is there anybody else?
Unless we want to reach out to Jason and have him come back.
Does he want to return to the meeting?
I enjoy that one. I'm happy to stay on that one too, if that's, if nobody's gonna arm wrestle me for it, so. But that's still only two of us now.
Chelsea?
Um, also, so being in the treasurer role and being, so being a part of finance and personnel, just personal experience, I mean, my career's been mostly in technology, so that's the one where I feel most informed about, but I'm also have a lot of experience, um, and then passionate about policy, um.
So?
So, either, I guess, so that's just me speaking out about the ones that I'm probably most interested in.
You got the job.
As a second one. So all of that to say, facility is probably the least area of, of expertise, um, and interest at this time, but.
I would be happy to come up with communications and technology, if that's a better fit for you. Go ahead.
I was also gonna suggest, though, based on personal experience, I found it helpful to be on policy in my first year.
Yeah.
Because you really dig into the policies that you need to become familiar with anyway.
Yeah.
So.
Good feedback. So, I mean, I'm happy to fit into either one of those if there's, I would like to stay on policy as well, so.
Okay, so what do we have for communication and technology then? Let's just start on the top and work down. What do we got?
Well, we've got Chelsea.
Chelsea?
I'm indifferent to that. I was going to make such assumption that nobody was in any current one other than what we'd written out.
So it's gonna be for communication, technology, Chelsea and who?
In a committee just because they were in it last year.
No, I'm not either. No, no, no.
So right now, I only have Chelsea.
Okay, for, we're starting on top.
For communication and technology.
I'm fine remaining on it, I'm fine coming off it if somebody else wants an opportunity.
I gave my stuff to Chelsea. Yes. I'm happy to serve on communication and technology. I, having not put up my signature name on any of them currently, um, I would actually really, I, I've been on every one except for facilities, so I guess that kind of interests me just to, to try it out, um, and we still have a third spot if that is okay.
Okay, so Chelsea, Larson, and Trish for communication and tech?
No, we're talking, no, facility.
I mean, I'm willing to stay there, but I-
Trisha, I think is selecting the third.
I would like to just pick, pick my first one.
Yeah, so facilities will be Scott, myself, Trisha.
Yeah, outside of hearing any disagreement to it, the complete, out of these four, we have completed facilities, which is Scott, Matt, and Trisha, and then finance and personnel, which is Matt, Chelsea, and Jen.
Yes.
So we just need to fill communications and technology and-
Board policy.
Jen, you also said you, you want to remain on policy.
Chelsea's interest.
Chelsea has interest in policy.
So it's gonna be, what, M., Jen, Chelsea?
Chelsea would be policy then.
And then?
And I can remain on common tech. That, that's fine. Like I said, I'm, I'm indifferent there. If nobody else wants to arm wrestle for it, that's fine. But we do need a third member.
I already had you on there.
I don't want you to have to erase your pen that you-
Well, my, yeah, I'm not a tech guy, so it wouldn't make sense for me to be on that thing.
So common tech will be Chelsea, myself, and Trisha. Finance and personnel, Matt, Chelsea, and Jen. Board policy, myself, Jen, and Chelsea, and then facilities, Scott, Matt, and Trisha.
Yep.
And we don't actually have to vote on it. So then it would be, um, I'd be looking for a, a motion to make annual committee board. I actually don't know that we have to do that. We didn't give that formal last year. It was just that we talked about it.
Well, it does anything, so moved.
Second.
Would be formal.
Well, I guess I'm, before we, I think we, we actually need to be more formal on which ones are we going to keep, and then we don't need to be formal, we actually talk about who's gonna be it, so I guess-
Would that be during the discussion of it? Because technically there is a motion and a second on the table for making the annual committee appointments, but, you know, but I guess I was still questioning.
Maybe we want to amend this one as well.
Because we're looking at getting rid of career in tech?
Right, so the motion there would be to, first, the first, I guess, motion would be to-
Choose which ones were-
They also stopped saying what I was looking for motion for, so I don't fully understand what your motion is. So maybe we just start over and say, what is, Emily, you had the first, or you were making the motion, so what is your motion?
Well, the motion that would be naturally occurring on the agenda would be to make the annual committee school board representative appointments, because that's on the agenda that we approved.
So that is the- We actually approved this. This is, this is just our-
This is, I guess, next in line, so.
This is just our meeting agenda and tasks.
So is your motion to?
To make the appointments or make the?
Do we, the question occurred underneath, do we need to make a motion at all if we are going to remove career in tech?
I think that would be when we would make the motion.
So I make a motion to remove career in tech ed from our annual committees.
Second.
Or third?
I have a motion from Emily to remove career in tech ed and a second from Scott.
I gotta win it.
Uh, any discussion? I mean, I'll start. I, I've been on it for this year. Um, I guess I really hesitate to remove it entirely. Um, I, I really do value what you had shared, Jen. I do think that it would be really good to encourage and invite our students in more, but I don't want it to appear that our board doesn't fully support that program by not showing up. And I do think that there is a level of support shown to even the people that are, like, because we have people coming in, investors coming in to sh- to see what, what that programming is doing for our students and what their investments are doing in that, in that setting, and I think I hesitate to not have at least one board member present, or at least invited to be present.
But that doesn't show that we're not supporting it, and just because their investors are there, they're not gonna invest or not invest if the board members there are not.
Yeah, it's no different than when we have the kids come in and, and, you know, for the football team and the hockey team, they all come in here and we get to support them and, and I think it's the same with the career organization. I mean, I loved it. I mean, it was really special to, I, even when I was on duty, I would stop and when they're doing their little-
SaberCon?
Yeah, the SaberCon and stuff, so, I mean, it, it, uh, it's a great program, but I, last time it was really not a whole lot of input from the students, so to speak. So I think we can invite them in.
I would argue, like, when I, I mean, start all senior connection, that's, our, our job as an appointment isn't necessarily to have input from direct student or from us, it's just for us to be there showing that support. So like, I went on senior connection for three years. Uh, my job and my role wasn't to necessarily do anything but to sit there, give the report on what district happenings, and then come back and share the board. Like, I, I'm in full agreement with what you had shared at our work session about having them come in. But I do, I do kind of think that there is value to us at least having one representative there.
But never once have I heard a board member ever give an update to this committee of what the board is doing. So while you're saying that you do update the senior connection, I would agree then that there is a purpose for the board to be there. We don't do any kind of board updates at those meetings.
Sorry to backtrack, but can somebody remind me what the meetings, how the meetings are run and what's part of it, because I haven't been to one?
So it's usually called to order by, um, Mr. Schulte, and he goes through the things that they've done, um, him and the other teachers that are in, uh, tech ed. And like this last time, we had a video show of SaberCon, like where they're at, and again, great. They have their networking that's there for the different companies that are in, that help, whether it be bringing supplies in, um, like job, like job shadowing. I don't want to say field trips, but onsite, field trips. And then updating what they're doing throughout the year, like what, some of the updates on Saber, on SaberCon and why maybe that location wasn't moved. On time like this, last year there was a delay. Again, their meeting is beneficial to them, and I am in full support of that continuing. I just don't think that a board member being there is what is going to say or be significant to that continuing.
How frequent are these meetings?
Twice a year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at, last year we had three people from the board assigned to it. That's the most of any of these secondary committees. I have a little concern, like Trisha voiced, that taking every board member away from that just has the optics of showing less support. I, yeah, meaning it might not, it would definitely not mean that. None of us are showing lack of support, I don't think, for this program. I mean, society life has been a big push over the last few years, the, the non-college route and get the career options.
Right.
That's very important education, but, yeah, I just wouldn't wanna, you know, see somebody take it and run, you know, well, there were three board members here last year and now they've all completely abandoned us.
Well, the other thing I had said to that then is, can we look at broadening it? Because there's more than just your industrial tech that would fall under Career and Tech Education. And that is the focus. So what about those other career paths in the trades?
That seems to make a lot of sense.
But that's not...
I know it's not the current practice from the sound of it, but, um, it would make a lot of sense that if that group were to expand or... I don't know how they'd be organized, I'm not part of the committee, so I don't wanna step on toes.
But then, at that point, would it look more like, and I've never been a part of community ed advisory, but would it look more like that potentially? Where you have groups of people, not necessarily all the businesses that are coming in and giving their updates and what their needs are and the school reporting back to them as well, and then working together and collaborating, which is great. But then, would it look like an advisory? And how can we get more people networked into the trades that are more than the industrial techs?
As a compromise on this for this year, because it sounds like there needs to be some revamping to the committee. If it's to remain, then it needs to probably broaden out. As a compromise for this year, do we wanna take it to a one-member committee?
Sure.
Scott? You don't have to, but I'm just, I'm, if you enjoyed it, whatever.
I did, I, I love the tech stuff, or, you know, that, I was a builder.
Yeah.
I mean, so the trades are...
What if it broadened out into more like your medical fields and the other, the other areas?
It's fantastic, my daughter just became an EMT.
Because what I thought is, is that it sounds like we need to actually put some focus into revamping this committee long-term if it's gonna remain, otherwise, if it isn't gonna be revamped, then we, we need to look at potentially then not having it next year, but in a transitional year where we're maybe making some changes to this, we just keep one representative there? This is my compromise idea. I guess if anybody is willing to do...
I was, I was actually thinking the same thing, you just beat me to it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Dr. Robert, do you have any, from an administration standpoint, do you have any feedback on these items?
No, I, I think it's an interesting conversation as, as I think about having only also attended one, is that have we allowed for opportunity to ensure that we're having board members feel like they have a voice at that meeting? And that's not to disregard all the great work that's happening in our CTE right now, but having just experienced, again, our Community Education Advisory meeting and having two board members there who had active voices during that time, um, that feels like a good use of a school board member's time. So I do think, to your point, Matt, how we look at what that committee would look like, especially as it pertains to what school board members' participation is on it. Yes, we should maybe relook at how we do. It might be just a different meeting. Yeah, I would love to explore that for this committee.
Do we wanna keep it kind of afloat with one member this year as we transition into something a little bit different with it?
Yeah, that would be great.
And I'd still appreciate what we talked about at the last work session, you know, inviting that group in to board meetings to give...
I think we should do that regardless.
Give presentations, right.
Yeah.
Do that on top of keeping a board member involved in this committee.
Yeah, and I think that could be number one. And number two, if we continue to have meetings as they're happening right now with Mr. Schulte and Mr. Miller and inviting the full board if you wanted to attend something like that where partnerships are there, having discussions, I think that's, that's open to the public, so you'd always be welcome to come to those too.
I think having a regular, now that SaberCon is more established, I think there needs to be a little more consistency of either, I mean, Joe does a really good job of like videotaping and, and sharing some of that stuff on his YouTube channel. Um, but making it more, making, if, if they aren't able to come in person, at least giving the opportunity for that video to be shared at the board table, I think would be, I mean, that's not what I would prefer. I would prefer the students in person. But I think even if, even if it's just a simple update on a more regular basis, I think a lot of people, including myself, I would really love to have more updates and I'm not a big YouTube channel follower.
But I think we could utilize some of our work sessions, uh, the board would, wouldn't like us to. We could utilize some of our board sessions to make sure some of those presentations are heavy.
Okay, so the motion that we had was to discontinue the Career and Tech Education Committee. So we will have to vote on that. So a vote yea would be discontinuing it. Um, I think we were all in agreeance that we would continue and just have one member. Um, but we were still able to do the vote that you would so choose. So all those in favor of discontinuing the Career and Tech Ed Committee signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion does not carry unanimous. So then, I will look for a motion to just make annual committee...
I'll, I'll move to establish these annual committees, um, with the caveat that negotiations is still just negotiations, not personal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Matt, second by Jen, any discussion? That would be when we have to actually.
So now it's time to assign?
So we would be, no, we would be agreeing that Benton Sterns Community Ed.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure everybody, so Benton Sterns Education District, Community Education Advisory, Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness, Schools Advocating for Fair Funding, Negotiations, Sartell Senior Connection and Career and Tech Ed are the committees that we would be establishing. Do we want to have in this discussion the number of representatives at each of these? Or are we good with the consistent other than changing the Career and Tech Ed to the one?
Well, I just think that we should have it open to up to three, if you want it.
If there's three interested?
Yeah, if they're interested, there's no reason we have to put a number on it.
Well, there are some that we have to.
You're talking about specifically Career and Tech Ed or all? Just all of them. Oh, okay. But, you know, like, for Benton Sterns, you've been running with that for years and you've been doing a phenomenal job, so there's no point having three...
Right, but that one, that one does only allow one person.
Oh, okay, well then, it's... That's, that's not so much a committee appointment, that's an appointment to a board.
Got it.
Each of us member districts can only have one appointee. Okay.
Well, I agree with Scott, I would keep you on that one if you're still interested in doing Benton Sterns.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue on.
You have the history there, so...
Okay, so the motion on the table is to establish these, so I, and then we can, once we've voted to yes, then we can go ahead and do assignments. So is there any other discussion on which ones?
So we'd be establishing them without a restriction on necessarily the number of people unless it was a requirement.
Um, my only other, and I don't know why I didn't think about this until now, um, Matt, you are currently our school board representative for the Minnesota State High School. We voted to approve you to that, but should that be on this list?
I...
It is on the webinar with the MSBA.
Okay.
If we do that though...
But it's, it's actually a separate action item.
Well, and if we do that, I would like to have more specific conversation about that specific committee, because it's not really in a committee.
Yeah, that's, it's the same as like Benton Sterns, it's an appointment to advisory. I guess it's not really a board, they call, I think they call it an advisory committee. But of the twenty or so districts that are part of that one, I think they only have openings for two school board members. So it's not one where, once my time is done, somebody from our district automatically gets to fill a spot. It's, it, it's that committee that decides who to approach and invite, so it's out of our hands.
Don't we have to have a board member that is a representative of Minnesota State High School League?
Yeah, it's part of the...
That might be, well, that would be different than my advisory committee appointment then.
It might be, but I do think there is supposed to be somebody that is...
Okay, and I'm unaware of what you're raising now, so...
As part of our annual or meeting business, one of the action items, separate from committee appointments, is designate a rep to MS, Minnesota High School League. So... But it is a separate action item and not in reference to any of our committees, so I think we could add that as an action item after this.
Well, and before we do that, I just, Mike, regardless of, I'm full support, but I just, one more question, sorry. I would ask that even if we aren't technically gonna like vote or change what you're doing, I would ask that when we list our committee appointments on the website and in any other documentation, that that would be listed. We'll just, I mean, it would be Matt, so it would be listed under Matt's appointments. So then, sorry. So then, does somebody want to make a motion to amend, to add?
It would be a separate action item, it wouldn't be in reference to the committees, so we'll do that next.
Okay. So then I will, I have a further discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the committee appointments as we have discussed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Okay.
I'm curious, so then, Matt, I believe you're gonna stick with DSCD?
Yep, happy to.
And then Matt and I are on negotiations, is that what?
Yep.
Yes. I would like to remain on Cacer. More passionate about that one.
On what?
Comprehensive achievement and...
World's Best Workforce. Let's go through all the names in the three years I've been here.
These damn acronyms. I spelled it all the time.
You should get used to it.
I know, neither does though.
Um, I would also be interested in that one, but I don't need to take yours. No, I actually was gonna say I would actually really like to continue with DSCD, so, that's right.
So Chelsea and Emily are going to Cacer then, is that what, that is, okay.
And I am indifferent on remaining, remaining on committee ed, I like it. Today's meeting was extra entertaining, um, but if somebody else has an interest in that, I'm absolutely indifferent.
I also, like, I don't know if anyone's actually looked at the sheet that Mike passed out, but it does kinda tell you the, the general, um, obligation that you're signing up for. So, I mean, DSCD is a monthly meeting, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, community ed advisory has been January, March, May, August, November, that's what last year was. World's Best, sorry, Cacer is typically four times a year in February, April, October and December, starting at seven thirty, lasting an hour. Um, schools at, for, Schools Advocating for Fair Funding is four times a year. Is there a typical time?
It might be more than four times. I think it's four within the session and then there was one or two at the end of the year.
Yeah, um, plus the possibility of doing like the visit to the Capitol to talk to legislators, that sort of thing. So it is more than four, but, um, when it's the SAF meetings, it's typically Friday mornings at a hotel in Roseville, which can be attended remote.
And they're usually longer than an hour.
They're, yeah, nine thirty to eleven thirty. Or eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
Roughly two to an half hours.
Usually on Fridays, but I think there's one or two on Thursday.
Okay.
On a Thursday.
The next one in, I think it's February is on Friday.
Yeah, okay. And then negotiations, since you two are staying at a hotel, they, they're as needed.
Yeah, that depends on the contracts.
Sartell Senior Connection is the first Monday of the month at nine thirty?
First Monday morning of each month at nine thirty.
And if there's a holiday, they usually just push it back a week.
Yep.
And then Communication and Technology, I think they only meet two times a year. Do you mean Career and Tech? Sorry, Career, sorry, not Communication, Career and Tech Education, Tech Education, sorry. Okay, so now that everyone has looked at least that document. Currently I have Matt on Benton Sterns, I have myself on Community Education, Larson and Thielen on Cacer and Morley and Smith on negotiations.
Scott, didn't you say you wanted to stay on Career and Tech Ed?
Yeah.
Anybody?
I can remain, if, if nobody else is chomping at the bit for Community Ed, I'll absolutely remain on that too, that's fine.
I would give you that if I can stay on SAF.
You wanna stay on SAF?
I do.
Okay. Matt, are you wanting to remain on that?
Uh, yeah, I would. I have interest in that.
Does anybody?
Unless Chelsea, you had interest in that or, or if you're free Monday mornings at nine thirty, you could...
I'm not.
Not that I'm trying to get rid of Senior Connection, I enjoy those, but, um, it, it is valuable because you get a lot of good feedback from a wide variety of different community members and in part, so... Um, are there any others, Chelsea, that you're tying up?
Well, I'm also just trying to be cognizant of just the obsolete and then four right now, which is fine, but also not wanting to overcommit.
That's true, you're in, you're in three of the ones we already did.
Yep, yep.
Good point. Well, if nobody else is looking at it all...
I can't do Senior Connection, so I'll just say that.
That would be one that I would love to do, but it's just like the only one I absolutely not do, so...
I, I'm happy to stay on both SAF and Senior Connection if nobody wants those spots, but...
It isn't a want, Matt.
Yeah.
I would love to do Senior Connection, I just truly can't.
I just can't commit with the current long-term job I'm gonna be doing here in a couple months, but I, I mean, I also could do it after that, but...
Put me down for this one then. I think no Mondays aren't ideal, especially mornings, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any other?
You and Emily for Community Ed?
Yeah, so, uh, unless my notes are wrong, I currently have Matt on DSCD, Meiling Larson on Community Ed Advisory, Larson, Thielen on Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness, Smith and Morley remaining on Schools Advocating for Fair Funding, Morley and Smith remaining on negotiations, Morley staying on Sartell Senior Connection and Scott at Career and Tech Ed. So then I will look for a motion to identify the official newspaper for publication presently as our top leader.
Before we move to that, do we want to, we might as well. I, I need a motion to add, uh, designating a rep to the Minnesota State High School League.
So we have a motion to designate a board member as a representative to the Minnesota State High School League and a sec, a motion by Emily and a second by Scott, any discussion?
Uh, yeah. So when I was at the MSBA, um, Delegate Assembly, there's a lot of frustration with the Minnesota State High School League and the representatives not having a calendar of when the meetings are, the representatives not being, um, kept informed of things. So if we're going to have somebody be, well, and we have to, but whoever we are going to assign next, I think it's separate from what you were saying, Matt, as far as the advisory committee. Um, and I'm just repeating what the, the frustration was at that meeting. I would like it to be somebody who isn't afraid of being kind of assertive and being pushy and saying, when are your meetings, I'd like to attend your meetings, what are those meeting minutes? So we are getting some sort of update because they are the only organization that we can use for sports and they should be transparent to their representatives, so that is where I stand on that.
Now, Jen, who would that rule? I don't know, you have more of a background on whatever that conversation was, that's the only reason why I say it. I think it would be difficult for me to, maybe for anybody, but for me to step in and be pushy about if I hadn't been a part of that conversation and know the background of that.
The, the proposal that was put there in front of that assembly was that we'd get legislature involved and we don't want to get legislature involved because you don't want them dictating what a company, like a private company does. But they do have the monopoly of our sports and our athletics. So I do think there might be, just based off of some of the, the grumblings in the room, there might be some pushback, um, from those representatives to try to get some transparency from Minnesota State High School League and what their meetings are all about and those minutes and when they are, so...
What was the meeting you were at, at that discussion?
The MSBA Delegate Assembly.
Okay. Um, could I just get more basic information on what the school board rep does at NSHSL? Do you know the...
That's a great question.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think that...
Because we've obviously never assigned somebody before, so...
Correct, and I think we're supposed to have somebody, but that's where the frustration was coming from is you have these reps, but these reps aren't, they're not doing, I don't wanna say they're not doing anything, but they're not being told anything. So there's not... So there's not really any meeting minutes that are coming from this. Again, I'm just reiterating what was said, it wasn't my proposal by any means, but, um, so, I would just like to see whoever doing that is trying to partner with some of the other school districts and say, we are representatives and we would like meeting minutes, and and maybe me telling you this, Matt, cuz you're the advisory committee person, is enough, but that is what, where some of the frustration was.
Okay. Yeah, I've only been to two of those meetings so far, and this topic has never come up, so I'm looking at the bylaws here on the MSHSL website, I, I, there's too much to look into right now, but I wonder if there's some sort of definition of what this school board rep is supposed to do in theory, but.
I don't know.
Well, whoever, is there anybody that, whoever we end up designating, is, is that person comfortable with looking more into what their role is? Just getting more information, asking more questions, or at least following up on that?
Dr. Rehardt, do you have any knowledge of this position?
Well, I saw you nodding, so.
Yeah, there, we, we do have a member that belongs to the Minnesota State High School League as questions come forward. Um, we've had questions come forward, um, this year that came onto the superintendents and to the athletic directors related to ninth graders being involved in the Minnesota State High School League. I assume that have embedded and talked about at the school board member level.
And I, again, I don't, it, the big concern was the lack of transparency, not knowing what meetings are, not getting meeting minutes.
Not probably knowing about a topic like that, or, you know, maybe not having that knowledge before it gets sent to the superintendents potentially. I don't know, again, that was.
I honestly, superintendents weren't brought up, but that's, like, was it was kinda, it was an interesting conversation to see a lot of people are like, nope, we don't want the, like, do not get the state involved, let's try to navigate this ourselves, so MSBA didn't take a position on it. Which would be fine, cuz that's not what they were, that's not what the assembly is for, but.
Did anybody in that discussion have experience with being a school board rep in the past and give, I, I know there was a lot of confusion.
It sounded like the person that was speaking about it is a, probably a rep that was, is very frustrated that.
That brought the proposal. At the delegate assembly, it's just voting on proposals to bring in front of the legislature, so typically, I would assume that the person who introduced that proposal, and that proposal has to be approved by the MSBA board to even come to the floor for a vote. So whoever it was, I'm assuming is a active reformer who designated a rep.
Joining them.
That's a, that's my decision.
Do we know, so, my last question then is, you said each district is required to assign one of these people?
For the MSBA, that's at our annual org meeting, we are required to assign a rep, a designated rep.
It does, so, I'm looking at, uh, two oh eight.
For MSHSL?
Two oh one, yeah.
Two oh, okay. A bylaw, I see.
Yep. Um, is it designated school representatives at the beginning? It's the governing board of each member school, shall designate two representatives who are authorized to vote for the member school at all district, region, section meetings. And I do, I'm pretty sure there are others that, other districts that list their their Minnesota State High School League rep on their website.
I'll pay it through, yeah, cuz I'm on that one. Yeah, in the constitution, yeah.
I'm on a different thing here.
I clicked on the constitution.
Oh, yeah, I'm on a different one. Can I just see that?
Yeah.
I just wanna know if this is the same thing.
Yeah.
If it's different.
Yes, that's my, my only real question is, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know what, kinda no different than like, what are we doing on any of these committees that we've established and we have talked about? Like, what is the role? As long as that can be kinda clearly defined.
I don't think that.
Well, right, that's, that's. Right, and I think that's kind of like a well.
But, so I guess that's why I was saying the person, whoever is delegated to this role or designated for this role, I think just has to be willing to maybe dig into that a little bit more, which sounds like it's potentially gonna take.
Well, I don't even think, we have an option, so, I think we're supposed to have somebody.
Well, we are, but it would be nice if whoever that is.
Well, and we can do the same thing that we did last year, I think Jason was on the proposal, like, so whoever ends up being that designated, then, you know, I don't know that we did a great job of actually doing this, like, we were supposed to have our first meetings last year and then report back with like what our descriptions were. But, I mean, I, I would think that that would be a reasonable ask of whoever that individual is, to come back and say like, okay, this is what I found, or this is my investigation. Unless, unless, Dr. Rehardt, like, you were shaking your head right away that you knew that we had that.
I knew that we were supposed to have two members.
Okay.
But I, I didn't know that it was voted on during our reorganization. That that, that that had to happen during this time, cuz I didn't see it on our previous reorg meeting in my previous school district. It wasn't something that necessarily happened during the reorg meeting. But I am looking at what Chelsea alluded to, and it's actually supposed to be two.
Two.
Yeah, one has to be an administrator. Yeah, it says one of the representatives shall be a member of the school's governing board, and the other shall be an administrator or a full-time faculty member.
Which I would assume would be.
Me.
Yeah. It says, to your point about when this happens, it says at the beginning of the league's fiscal year, are they on the same fiscal year we are, or are they?
Gosh, I don't.
Because that might be why it's never happened at a reorg meeting, is if their fiscal year is the same as ours, then we would do this in July.
This would be, this would be a great opportunity if we would have had Mr. Dacey with us. Cuz he might have recalled.
Well, is this something we can table?
I, I was just thinking that, I mean, the way that it sounded in MSBA.
It would be nice to dig into it and figure out what the heck we really need to.
And I'm sure, you know, if you, or you can check with Bruce, I'm sure he has knowledge of it.
Well, and I think me and Bruce and our neighbors, I can find out for sure, I just know that there's been a, there has been a vote this last year that I did vote on on, but it was a hasten on the superintendents.
I mean.
And I assume that the board members who are part of governing boards, elected officials, had already weighed in on it when the vote came to be. And it was related to adding that. As part of the Minnesota State.
Yeah, Scott, I agree, I mean, I feel like there's just so much uncertainty right now, and
Yeah.
It's not like anything is going to, we don't have a good consequence, I don't think, at the end of the night, if we don't want to determine this, so let's, do we wanna table it until our next, even our next work session discussion, and then we can officially designate somebody at our next regular meeting?
And I'd love to have that opportunity to talk a little bit more, too.
So, bring you a vote.
So, vote for Chelsea's daughters to take that position?
Absolutely.
All right, so we do have a motion on the table to designate an MS, an Associate.
I rescind my motion. I can do that.
All right, yeah, fair enough.
So then I will look for a motion.
Then I unsecond it.
I will look for a motion to identify the official newspaper for publication.
So.
Second. Okay, motion by Emily, second by Jen. Um, discussion, I mean presently we're at the Sartell News Leader. I don't have anybody else.
Makes the most sense, it has most of the mailbox.
There's a lot of newspapers.
I thought you were gonna start one in your research.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're so technologically.
Yeah, I'm hand-lating everything.
Go get a handwritten newspaper from Scott every once a month.
Yeah, I'd be about a month behind every new thing that came. Made, all right.
Okay. So do we have to amend, or do we just?
Amend, for what?
Well, when I looked for the motion, I just said identify the official newspaper for publication.
Okay, motion to amend to name the Sartell News Leader as the official newspaper for publication.
Second. Okay, so, a motion to amend by Matt, a second by Chelsea to state the Sartell News Leader as our newspaper for publication, all those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say nay. Amendment passes unanimously. So then, we are back to our original motion, which is now amended to say that we are identifying the official newspaper for publication as the Sartell News Leader, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Only opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I will look for a motion to approve authorization for the board chair to seek legal counsel. Second. Any motion by Emily, second by Jen, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So then I will look for a motion to set the number, dates, and times of our work sessions. We presently are having nine meetings, uh, the first Thursday of each month at six thirty. So. Second. Motion by Jen, second by Emily, discussion, um, I believe the reason we didn't have a March work session last year was because of the superintendent search. So I looked at the calendar, it would be March sixth if we would like to go, move forward with having one. Obviously, we're not hiring the superintendent.
Well, yeah, it makes sense to have one in March, because that would be the first opportunity after our referendum vote. So we'll probably have plenty to discuss either way, no matter how that comes out.
So March sixth.
Yep.
What, what day, March?
March sixth.
So that's a Thursday.
First, yeah, the first Thursday.
And, uh, sticking with same times, eighteen hundred, or eighteen thirty? Sorry, six thirty PM.
Sorry.
Are you talking in code? I operate in military time.
You'd be proud, she says her phone to military time. Okay, was, did anyone look at all and see?
How about we don't have any meetings in the summer?
At all.
Come on, man. I just got that RV, I'm gonna be cruising.
Yeah, you can park it on.
Killing me here, killing me.
So the first, I mean, to your point, the first Thursday in July is the third, which is.
Well, currently, we don't have, we don't have any.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, like, we can justify still not having one.
I can see getting rid of June and August, that would be cool.
July, July's good, just keep, no, no work session. It's too cold.
You guys are killing me.
On June fifth.
It's too hot, it's still too cold.
Does this open it up, so like, let's say we get to, we're in July, and we're like, hey, we don't really have anything to discuss beginning of August. At that point, can we change it or not?
I like where you're going with that.
I just wondering if this like sets it in stone.
We can always alter, we can always alter dates on these if we had to make adjustments, as long as it's enough in advance that everybody can plan accordingly, but yes, we could always.
Well, like I said, I already see conflicts and.
Well, speaking of August, I have a conflict with the. I have a conflict with the August date.
So. Okay, I'm going backwards here, hang on.
Oh, yeah, Thursday's still work, no.
Just in the summer.
Um, is it just that day, or is it that week, Matt?
Hmm, more than one day that week, but not the whole week. So, what is it? I could do Monday, Tuesday that week, for sure.
Jen's an old one.
But, yeah, that doesn't work, so we'd have to probably look at the next week.
I mean, if we had to do it on a Mon, on that Monday, being that it's eight months away, I can remake some arrangements, but I can, absolutely cannot on Tuesday.
Well, what about the week following, so we don't have to do a work schedule?
What's our regular meeting date in August, it is?
I have only the question, and Dr. Rehardt, you may not know the answer, when is, when is the two weeks that our students have no contact for athletics?
Yeah, yeah, oh, great question, so I have to go back to.
Cuz if we're gonna move this, I would really love this to not be in that timeframe, cuz as a parent who has a student athlete currently at the high school, it would be nice if that would be that. Cuz that's supposed to be two weeks sacred of like no contact, so it'd be nice to be able to potentially plan on.
In my recollection, it serves me as July twenty eighth this year, and then.
July twenty eighth?
Yeah.
July twenty eighth for two weeks?
Yeah, from July twenty eighth through, sorry, I have to skip to.
Through August eleventh?
Yeah.
Okay, so the fourteenth would be fine, sorry, it's.
Fourteenth will put us four days before our regular meeting.
Yeah, that's the Thursday for Monday regular meeting.
I might have to.
For both.
For all, I appreciate that. Otherwise, what if? Uh, no, no.
I mean, it suggests a Saturday, so.
I lose, it's just not.
Oh. I'll give you a Monday.
So, I mean, you guys, that could make for a really short August regular meeting, we have all of our discussion, I mean, that, we have all of our discussion on, on our fourteenth, we come in, we have our regular meeting, and it's a quick regular meeting. I mean, I don't, I don't know that.
I'm not opposed to the fourteenth, I.
No, but if, didn't we already say that we weren't gonna do that for a different month?
Yeah.
Oh, we avoided it where we could.
Yeah.
I also kind of appreciate them being closer, cuz then, that, I mean, if I have to be in town.
So if we wanna schedule one that week, yeah, the fourteenth works for me.
The only other alternative that I was looking at is the last, like, the last Thursday in July, technically it would not be officially our August. It would be our August work session that we're holding on the last week of July, last day of July. I don't think that anybody is going to, like, interrogate us for our dates.
Yeah, it'd be fun too.
That would give more time, cuz the only issue I have with the work session so close to the regular meeting is if there is like, things that we might need to hash out or get more information on prior to making a vote on something we discussed at the work session that following Monday, it only gives one business day to reach out to anybody and ask questions or get anything resolved before we come to an action item potentially on that following Monday.
Yeah. I'm, the thirty first makes sense, cuz there is no July work session, so.
I'm fine with thirty first, so. Sorry, I was also just looking at November to see what the proximity was with our move date of the twenty fourth and our December. So that's why I'm not too, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Are you okay with that?
With the thirty first? Well, since we moved it back, I was just looking at how far away it is, so we would meet on Monday, November twenty fourth. We go through Thanksgiving, and on the following week, we're meeting, uh, or no, I'm sorry, we're meeting that Thursday, so we have a week and which I think is more reasonable than.
But that's from a regular meeting to a work session, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's the other way around.
That's why I wasn't responding, sorry, that's what I was trying to say, I'm fine with July thirty first. So technically, we're not having an August meeting.
Wait, you've put, you've put a meeting in July?
I know, so you got rid of August, though.
Straight up. So it's technically our work session for our August meeting.
Oh, you guys, I wanted to avoid the twenty eighth.
I was just gonna say, you, yeah, you had wanted to avoid that period.
So, get rid of July and August, we're good.
Cuz that is a blackout period for. I guess I'm.
There's the, for the high school students, if you want any type of summer vacation or to take time, it ends up only really being that two weeks, because everything else they have to kind of be there, sports, and that's a two-week blackout period.
They have, they have summer string, they have basketball.
Yeah.
Okay, so the only alternative date to that was the fourteenth, which is so close to our regular meeting, or Jen would have to alter the fourth, or like an earlier date, the week where.
Well, I would also argue, like.
I can't do the fourth, because it's months in advance, I can't make changes a week before my schedule.
Is it five days would be better? I mean, we try and avoid Wednesdays, but there also is no, like, religious ed in the summers, from my experience anyways, unless I'm wrong. So we could move to the thirteenth. That would give us one extra day, so, an additional two days, or you'd have two days instead of one for business data.
Either one's fine in my calendar.
Does that, I mean, I would, is that easier for your work schedule, Jen, or is it?
What is it, Wednesday, what?
The thirteenth of August. I can make it, I just want a date.
Well, I mean, right, but on typically Mondays, you'd be giving, you'd be switching your work schedule, correct?
That's a six-day stretch for me.
The thirteenth, you wouldn't.
Right, but I, what I'm, well, not technically, but sure, I can make the thirteenth work.
So did that, we're doing August thirteenth?
Well, don't ask that right now, I'll tell you no day works.
Okay.
He's high on motions at the moment. We'll make sure he's just here on whatever day.
That the RV is parked. Okay, and then you and Angel in August will be meeting at six, to be consistent with when we meet for our work.
Okay, so the thirteenth at six PM.
Yes, okay.
Is that what we're all agreeing to?
Yes.
No, I'm free that day.
Mike, you're okay with, if there's questions that arise, that we need resolved before our meeting on the eighteenth, two days, we can navigate out it?
Right before the school year, when it's really not that busy, sure.
Give me, I'm sorry, that would be.
Yes, I got you on my side.
The nice thing about that time here is everyone is back, we are fully staffed in that time, so that, I think, the end would be.
The nice thing about that time here is everyone is back, we are fully staffed in that time, so that I think the answer would be yes, absolutely concerned.
It's not the answer I wanted to hear.
I'm not debating with you right now. You've made your point. So that was the only date that changed on this list.
Well, we decided to meet in March.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
And then we changed August.
March sixth. Six thirty.
Cause spring break. Last week.
March. We're good, we're good.
Appreciate that you just looked at that though, cause I didn't even think about it.
Okay. So, we have now set the date, number of dates and times, we are now going to be meeting ten, we're gonna have ten meetings. All but one will be the first Thursday of the month, we have agreed to August thirteenth being the one that will not be. They will be during the school year, it will be at six thirty, during the summer months it will be at six. Okay? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Okay, so then the next thing on our agenda is special post sessions related to school security. So move, or, actually, the other motion, so move.
Second.
Motion by Emily, second by Scott. Discussion.
Doesn't matter what month?
We've always done it in May, I feel like, but I think we're looking to add an additional one, which.
Well, I will tell you, I looked back at our, we asked for that last year, um, and whoever sits in the chair of the, the board chair, I would, I would think that that would be more on the secret secretary, I'd like to bring them in to.
Run a direct district administration to schedule those, I think what I would love is a little bit of guidance on the months that you would prefer, as we worked with our local law enforcement to see what would work best.
Well, I think typically we did it, one, towards the end of the school year, so that if there was any thing that we were missing, or anything that we needed to be alerted to as a board, and or just things that we could be doing over the summer month to improve our security, um, and then I don't know when the other one would.
Probably more of an update, or you know, mid-year update, mid-school year update, maybe like November, um.
I, it could be an update of like, that we got the things accomplished, or what we still need to work on, or, yeah.
So I'm gonna explore April or May and possibly end of October, October.
Sure.
Wait, you don't want it right in August, at the end of August? No?
I think he wants it September too.
I was thinking, July was when I was.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be here.
I already know your vote there, so. Yes, well, district administration will work the schedule lab with our city administration and police department.
Okay, so. I will look for a motion to, or sorry, not look for a motion, all those in favor of having two special or post sessions related to school security twice a year, looking at April and May and hopefully October, directing these district offices to. Get those scheduled for us, or I'll be able to work them out. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. Okay, um, the only other thing, and I apologize if it's on here, we've typically always taken a fourth, a photo of the board. My hope was, and I, I guess I would also be directing district administration, um, we, I thought Angie Hekman did a great job last year. My hope was that we could potentially throw out the dates of our January regular meeting, February work session, and or February regular meeting, in hopes that one of those would work for Angie to come and take those photos for us again. I thought that our safer year worked great, unless somebody had a different opinion, um, and as soon as district admin heard back from her, my hope would be that we could just, I think we did fifteen minutes last time, or whatever, whatever Angie would tell us. I know Scott, that it can be harder for you to get here at six, so if, if you have to be the last person and we do the group photo last.
And really, it's a flip of a coin.
Scott and I would like to do it now.
Oh, yeah, you guys are prepared.
Oh, yeah.
But Angie's not here, but, so that would be the thing and.
Except I get to comb my hair.
I don't know that it needs to be anything, but. I think we, the sooner we can get it done, the better, so that our, um, our pictures updated, like Chelsea, we.
I'll just get it with Angie.
So then, I will look for, sorry, again, I've not done this, so do I look for nominations again, or do we just re-vote on the nominations here again?
I don't recall, sorry, it's been two years since I looked into it.
Technically, we are returning to the action item, which is the vote on the nominations that are currently on the table, if somebody wanted to nominate, somebody knew they could make a motion to open nominations again and nominate an additional person, but if nobody is doing that, then we are returning to the action item of voting on the nominations that are on the table.
Okay.
And if there's further discussion, we just open it the same way that we did.
Okay, so we are back to the nomination that we have for Tricia Mealing and Jen Smith for board chair. I will open it back up for discussion if we need to. Okay, and then we will do it the same way that we did it the first time, so if you are voting, you'll raise your hand when the person that, when I say the person names.
Uh, as far as discussion goes, um, I mean, I don't see realistically here, for the interest of time, I don't necessarily see our votes happening to change at this point. Is there, cause right now, prior in this evening and in this discussion, there was a conversation about how, okay, we're gonna keep the role of the vice chair, the vice chair is gonna be as defined somewhat, the vice chair is somebody that the chair is going to be bouncing ideas off of communicating with, before responding emails or, or whatever, asking questions of. Matt, you were voted in as the vice chair, so is there somebody who, out of the three of us, let's just say Scott, myself, and Jen, cause we seem to be viewed as opposing sides on certain topics sometimes, is there anybody out of the three of us that anybody would be comfortable with serving as chair, Matt serving as vice chair? Were both viewpoints then, if we're gonna look at it as, there's three people with similar viewpoints and three other people with similar viewpoints, then both would be communicating back and forth on those things? I don't necessarily agree that that's the way that communication should be working from a chair, but being that that was brought up earlier. It's, I'm just throwing that out there, that.
So, I don't know if you were specifically asking me or everybody.
I mean, anybody who wants to contribute.
My thought on this is very, and have a unique perspective on this. When I became board chair, after two years of experience, I didn't think I had enough experience to do it, sitting on the board after only two years, it just so happened that at that point in time, Jason was the only other one who had more than that, and he was just unwilling to do it, he'd already served his time as board chair, and with the political climate, especially some targeting of him, he was not willing to do it, so it just fell, I feel like, to me, and I was glad to serve in that role, but. I, my personal feeling and the reason I'm backing Tricia is that four years of experience is much better than two, and I think that experience time really, really helps. So that's my, it's, I don't wanna say, I, same as when we hire a superintendent, you speak to the strengths of the person you're nominating, you don't tear down other people, I don't have anything that I would say, you know, as far as why specifically Emily, Jen, or Scott shouldn't be chair, I just am much more comfortable with the idea that somebody with more experience has chair, so I wouldn't nominate Chelsea, obviously, as a newcomer to the board. And I don't think that's hypocritical, even though I was two years in when I became chair, but I, I was uncomfortable with the idea that, oh boy, this has fallen on me and I've only been here two years. So, that's my viewpoint on it.
I agree on the.
I continue to support Tricia.
Brand new, I would say, yeah, a little tough, year one. I, I think at a certain point, though, it comes down to leadership ability more so than experience, you can have all the experience in the world and not have the leadership qualities that are necessary in the role, so I don't attribute everything to experience. And I guess my thought is, is that if we can't come to a consensus here, and there's, I would say some good chance that that's not gonna happen at the current standing as it is, we get to vote on this as one of our first items every month until we agree. So it's just another public spectacle, and what I'm looking for here is there to be some concession where, okay, Matt, you will serve as, since there's this perception that it's three and three, you can serve as a liaison for one side of a perspective on a controversial issue, and somebody else in the role of the chair can serve as the perspective of somebody from the other side of the issue, now again, we're talking about maybe, I don't know, two, three percent of the issues that we vote on, but unfortunately, those are the ones that are typically very visible to the public and come under scrutiny the most, so. To kind of begin this process of moving forward, can there be some comfort in a situation like that, where there could be support for Jen being in the role of board chair, knowing that now more defined roles of a vice chair would be that they would be active in communication with the board chair on, um, bouncing ideas back and forth on how to come to consensus on things?
So for me personally, I can say, I'm the one that nominated Tricia tonight.
I don't know why I'm looking at you, this is really a question for everybody here.
Sure.
This was, yeah.
Well, so I'll just, I, I don't have much to say, but I nominated Tricia today, and I, I'm gonna continue to vote for her, but if the result is a three to three stalemate, I'm definitely gonna give this thought, I, I don't wanna just dig my heels in for the sake of digging my heels in, but this is a scenario that I haven't given much thought to, so. I'm not ready to change my vote tonight, is all I can say definitively.
The other thing I, I will say, and I hate this argument, cause I don't agree with just changing the change, but Tricia was nominated last year because she wanted her turn, it had nothing to do with whether or not.
Well, that's not true.
That was one of the arguments.
When I nominated her, I fully felt and I still feel that she is a very capable leader, and I feel like.
I'm just saying.
It's clearly not a shared opinion tonight with everybody, but I feel like she did a very strong job this year of leading.
I'm just saying that was one of the arguments, or one of the, one of the things was this, that could have been her last chance, and she wanted a chance to serve as chair, so.
That was a point that was made, yeah, but my, my reason for nominating her last year was primarily because she's more than capable of doing the job, and I feel like she's done it.
I do, Emily, appreciate and like your idea of pairing, sharing vice chair, I wish that that conversation would have been held, that we could have considered that then ahead of voting for, like, vice chair, chair to determine like kind of which, how we wanted that partnership to look like, or, you know, without there being a bit more of that. I know we talked about some more formal guidelines around what the vice chair needs, but it's still not written into any policy, so that's, I, I like that concept of, or whether it's, you know, kind of like training, you know, having someone to give that experience to move in, and I like that concept, I just, my only hesitation would have been, it would have been nice to have been able to have then that conversation ahead of voting for any of the positions. Um, but I'll, I'll echo Matt too, like, it's something I'll certainly think about, I'm not just digging my heels in either.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't think that the. I don't think that it's gonna do us any favors. To come to January's meeting, February's meeting, and it has to be one of the first items on your agenda every month, to hash out the same vote, there's, we can all year long, but. I don't think that that's healthy for us, and I, Tricia would at this point have to be the one to essentially concede that, so, you know, and say, okay, somebody else can have the opportunity to also for Jen, or whoever, but. I, yeah, I don't think that that's what we as a board need, that means we start out every meeting splitting the vote. I think that we, I think that Jen has every right to have the opportunity to try this, and we've seen, Matt, we know what you're like as a chair, Tricia, we know what you're like as a chair, nobody knows what Jen is like as a chair, she's never been one, but I do think that we do need to have some change in leadership and see if we can find a healthy path forward, and starting it out on splitting votes every month is just not the direction I'm in. So for the sake of moving forward, I think that it would be a. Be strong sign of leadership to let somebody else have the opportunity.
Well, I think trust goes both ways, and I very much agree with your, um, statements about it's not gonna be healthy for us as a board to, um, start out our meetings that way. I, I have a lot of the same, similar feelings with Matt about experience, so I guess I would also argue that if that was what would have been brought up prior to voting for vice chair clerk and treasurer, um, and we wanted that relationship, I would have felt more comfortable with that relationship being, be like, an opportunity for someone, like Matt had the opportunity to learn, to do vice chair underneath someone as a chair, and I think I would feel more comfortable with it being in that relationship versus, um, the other way around.
Is there a reason that anybody is uncomfortable with Jen being in the chair role? I can handle it.
I don't, I don't think I have anything to add, but I've not already said. To Tricia's point, I. I did find value in being vice chair for the year before I was chair, when I served under Pat Maruchin. I'd be open to something like relinquishing my role as vice chair if Jen wants to step in to that role, I think that would be something I'd be more comfortable with at this point, but, yeah, I, the comments I had about experience earlier, I don't have anything more to add.
Okay, so we will do our vote the same way that we did it the first time, so, um, when I say the name, you'll raise your hand, so, a vote for Tricia for board chair. A vote for Jen for board chair. So we remain three, three, and we will start out our January meeting. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. We are officially adjourned at eight fifty seven.